We are live.
Thank you. This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Annual notice of this meeting was provided to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 5th, 2022. In addition, notice of this meeting via Zoom was faxed to the Home News Tribune and emailed to the Star Ledger and the Highland Park Planet on June 30th, 2022, and was posted on the Borough website at www.hpboro.com and on the bulletin board at Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, on June 30th, 2022, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. As mayor, I preside over the council meeting and may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant statement or participation in the virtual meeting if the participant's statement does not adhere to the three minutes provided to each participant for public comment, or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. All right, Detective McGraw, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Certainly, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you, Council President, for that flag. Roll call, please.
Mayor Brill-Mittler?
Here.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster?
Here.
Councilman George?
Here.
Councilman Hale? Councilmember Hirsch?
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han? Borough Attorney Schmier? Borough Administrator Hovir?
Here. Excuse me, Mayor. Borough Attorney did confirm he was having some technical issues, and he would call in if he can't sort them out shortly.
Okay, thank you. All right, council members, does anyone have any questions on the agenda for this evening? No, okay, very good. All right, now I get to one of my favorite things to do as mayor, and that is the opportunity to honor some of our police officers or residents whenever they go above and beyond the call of responsibility. And tonight, I'm honored to issue this proclamation to Detective McGraw and Officer Garly. Whereas, the Borough of Highland Park takes great pride in the efforts of the Highland Park Police Department to assist people in crisis. Whereas, the Highland Park Police Department, under the leadership of Police Chief Rick Abrams and Police Captain Jose Carrillo, have placed a premium on the training of police officers in the de-escalation, cultural sensitivity, critical incident management skills, and other soft skills to enhance their capability to diffuse tense situations and yield more positive outcomes. Whereas, Highland Park Police Department Officer Sean Garly was off-duty and driving home on Route 1 on Friday, June 3rd, 2022, when he noticed a car parked on the shoulder of the Morris Goodkind Bridge and a person pacing near the edge grabbing the railing and leaning over it. Officer Garly parked his car, got out, and began talking with the individual, learning that the person was distraught and thinking of jumping from the bridge. Whereas, Highland Park Police Department Detective Sean McGraw was also off-duty driving by and spotted the scene. He parked his car and got out to assist Officer Garly. Together, they helped to calm the individual and to move them away from the edge of the bridge, preventing serious injury or death to the individual. Whereas, on-duty Edison and New Brunswick Police Officers arrived shortly and took the person to an area hospital for evaluation and treatment. Now, therefore, I, Gail Brill-Mittler, Mayor of Highland Park, do hereby commend and thank Officer Garly and Detective McGraw for their skilled and selfless actions, which saved the life of a distraught individual who was considering suicide and helped to give the person a second chance. Their efforts reflect the very best values of the Highland Park Police Department and the Borough of Highland Park. Thank you both very, very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
I appreciate your work, both of you, and we'll have an official stamped, signed proclamation for each of you. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Okay, may I have a motion? Oh, no approval of minutes this week?
No.
Okay. Okay, we're going to go through our council reports, and I will at this time... Councilwoman Foster?
You can let them be excused. They don't have to stay on if they don't choose to.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Thank you for raising that.
Thank you both.
Thank you both very much. Enjoy the evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Okay. Council reports. I will go in order of how you appear on my screen, and I'm going to start now with Councilwoman Foster. Do you have a report?
Thank you, Mayor. My report is very brief tonight. The Junior Cadet Academy is still accepting applications for any of those, anyone who is still interested. Please reach out to our Highland Park PD and go on either the website or call into our Highland Park Police Department and get information on that. And you can be, you can be joined in the academy this year. Also, I just want to remind our residents to please, please, please lock your cars. When you leave your cars at night, don't leave it unlocked. Don't leave valuables in your car. Please close, lock your car before you leave. We don't, we want to avoid all kind of break-ins and items being missing. Also, please lock your doors. Please keep, whether you're home or not, your door should be kept locked. Just a summer safety, wanting to keep everything locked up. And also, I'm encouraging all our youth and everyone else that, whether you're riding your bikes or your scooters, to wear helmets just to keep us all safe. And as we walk across the street, look up when you're walking across the street. Just take a minute from that cell phone and just look up and pay attention to where you're going and to avoid lots of accidents. We want to make sure that everyone is safe and protected. So, my safe, my public safety tip is just to pay attention to your surroundings. Lock your cars, lock your homes, and look up from your cell phone when crossing the street. And I want to say, we had an awesome Fourth of July, well, Third of July celebration. We had tens of thousands of people out, so it was great. It was just wonderful being there, and just wonderful being out to see everyone come out to celebrate, and it was truly an awesome event. Thank you, Mayor. That's my report for tonight.
And I thank you, Councilwoman. All right, Councilwoman Canavera, do you have a report?
Yes, thank you. July is National Independent Retailer Month. The month-long observation offers an opportunity for us all to show our local small businesses our appreciation. Independent retailers support their communities by offering flexible employment. They are the people sponsoring local events and many other organizations in the community. By shopping at local independent retailers, you're also supporting the town which you live. Board of Health wants to remind everyone that it is flea and tick season. Please make sure to check yourself, your children, and pets who have been outside. The Commission for Universal Access wants to remind everyone that July is annual, July is annually recognized as Bereaved Parents Awareness Month, a month dedicated to raising awareness, the support necessary when one endures the loss of a child. Human Relations wants to remind you that it's National Minority Mental Health Awareness. It is meant to shed light on the multitude of mental health issues experienced within communities of color, including Black and Indigenous people and others that face disappropriate inequities due to systematic barriers and historical adversity. Food insecurity is still high. We have two programs, the Community Food Pantry in Highland Park gives a whole boot. Between these two programs, we're still serving over 300 families each month. You can find information on both on our website. Mental Health Commission wants to remind everyone, if you're having a mental health crisis, please reach out for help. The Middlesex County hotline numbers are Rutgers University Behavioral Health, Raridan Bay Medical Center hotline, 732-442-3794. Or you can text HOME, H-O-M-E, to 741-741 to connect with a crisis counselor. 324-7 support is at your fingertips. Thank you, Mayor.
And I thank you. Councilman Hirsch, do you have a report?
I do, Mayor. Thank you. Just wanted to address an experience I had today. I joined Governor Murphy and others as the governor signed a series of gun safety bills into law, and you know, it's not a moment too soon, and it's always too late. It's deeply unsettling, of course, to see the words Highland Park in the news with yesterday's shooting in Highland Park, Illinois, and our hearts are with our neighbors and communities around the country as they grapple with more senseless, preventable death. You know, Highland Park could be any town USA, and name notwithstanding, it's easy to imagine what happened in Illinois happening right here. It's easy to imagine it when my kids ride their bikes to their local camps today. It's easy to imagine when we gather as a community for the holidays, and it's easy to imagine because it's happening somewhere. This is why we have national or global crises. This is why when we have national or global crises, it's important to remember that the response starts right here at home. It's worth repeating that in New Jersey, because of decades of tireless activism, we have among the strongest gun laws in the country. We rank 48th among the 50, among 50 states in the number of per capita gun deaths per year. So that's a bottom of the list that we like to be at, and that's according to the Gifford Law Center. But there's certainly more to do, and many of the guns used in these mass shootings were purchased legally. Just a few things to note. The Borough Council supported several of the bills that were signed into law today, and the Borough Council supported those bills through a resolution at our last council meeting on June 14th. And they include requiring gun owners who moved to New Jersey to obtain a firearm purchaser ID card, requiring ammunition manufacturers and dealers to keep a detailed electronic record of sales and report them to the state police, and, and, and others. You know, and what you can do, you know, in the meantime, is you can call your congressperson at 202-224-3121, and they will connect you, and that's the switchboard, and they'll connect you to your, you just tell them where you live, and they will connect you to the right office. Be honest and kind to the staff person that answers because we want the nation to follow New Jersey's lead in gun safety. Also, now that these bills are law, call your legislator and let them know that you support the legislature and Governor Murphy's action on their Gun Safety 3.0 package of bills. And you can find your legislator, we're in the 18th district. You can find your legislator at www njledge.state nj.us. Also, it's also never too late to get involved and up-to-date with Moms Demand Action NJ, the Brady Campaign to Prevent Gun Violence, the Middlesex Chapter, the director of the Middlesex Chapter, Karen Cantor, was at the gun setting today, and she actually got a pen from the governor, one of the pens that he used to sign the legislation. So that's really, really incredible for her work. And you can also learn about how gun laws save lives if you go to giffords.org, G-I-F-F-O-R-D-S dot org. It was a wonderful time at the annual Independence Day fireworks this past Sunday. Thank you to the Highland Park Department of Recreation. I see Kim McGraw somewhere. Thank you, Kim. The Highland Park Police Department, the Highland Park Volunteer Fire Department, the Highland Park First Aid and Rescue Squad, the Highland Park Public Library was there. Mayor Gail Brill-Mittler, Council President Phil George, and Councilwoman Elsie Foster, where it was nice to share the mic with you and all the others who made this event happen. And once again, it's wonderful to be able to share a river and share the show with New Brunswick. Our fireworks present a true regional attraction from both sides of the river. This Independence Day and every day, let's think about what's happening in our communities and around the country to ensure environmental, economic, and racial justice. And let's think about reproductive rights and public safety. And it's important to note that women's healthcare and reproductive rights are still very much alive and well here in New Jersey. Let's think about and act on what's required to be intentional about these efforts, and let's make this a year of action. Speaking of action and speaking of spending time with neighbors, once again, please mark your calendars for the first installment of the Park Stock Summer Concert Series on Thursday, July 14th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Grove One, at Grove One in Donaldson Park. The headliner for the first concert is the Twilight Jazz Samba Quintet at Donaldson. And in fact, Dr. Ali, who's, who's actually playing at Pinos tonight, will be there too with his band, and they're amazing. There will be food trucks on site and overall good times. Please call 732-819-0052 for more information or go to www.hpboro.com. There are four performances lined up, so including the Jazz Samba Quintet. Check out the Do Rights on July 21st, Hey Bulldog on August 4th, and Silent Night and the band called Fuse on August 11th. These are all amazing local talented bands. These are not just, you know, we don't lower the bar for talent because they're local. These are legitimate, professional, amazing bands that happen to be rooted right here in Highland Park. So it's very, very cool. And just finally, just speaking of the park, it was so great to see the collaborations between Middlesex County and Highland Park come to fruition. And a particularly thank you to Commissioner, Director Ron Rios and Mayor Gail Brill-Mittler for the improvements at Donaldson Park Playgrounds, which had been out of commission since Hurricane Ida last September. Most important, however, was how great it was to see the kids and parents out on the playground again. My kids have spent a lot of time there, and now the community can look forward to more time enjoying this brand-new equipment. So check them out. And just a reminder, starting back in May, the Borough did begin, partnering with the Highland Park Public Schools, did begin working on upgrading the heavily-used recreation complex, the track and field. These renovations include resurfacing the track, reinstalling a new turf field, and upgrading the area lighting to energy-efficient fixtures. And the work is expected to be completed in early September, but if you're a user of that area, you have probably noticed that it is not open to the public right now. So please, please take that, please keep that in mind as you head outside and gather in one of our many public spaces for recreation, active and passive. And thank you, that's my report.
And Councilman Hirsch, could you tell us what time the Park Fest bands will start playing?
Yes, I'm sorry. Each show is 6:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you.
Twilight.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Council President Phil George, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mayor. A short report first. I'd like to thank Kim McGraw and also the coordination of Councilman Hirsch. The reunion of everyone at the park for the fireworks was just genuinely impressive. The crowd's the largest I ever saw. You could see the hillside when the rockets went off was entirely covered, as were both fields. It was just very, very impressive. The coordination was excellent, and the new format I found delightful. And a lot of people commented very well. And Councilwoman Foster and Councilman Hirsch, the three of us were there, just thought that the event was terrific. Joins, whether it's post-pandemic, need to be around people again or whatever, that event was crowded. Also, the Queer Ear Concerts on North Fourth last week were a great event. I enjoyed it. Dr. Ali, of course, is my next-door neighbor, so I get to hear a lot more free concerts than most people do, but it was just so excellent. Tonight, the Sustainable Highland Park is having an online forum on composting. They've been working on trying to get more active engagement in composting. There are some setbacks because of DEP requirements, which would make the Borough essentially a commercial composter, and the permitting and fees are exorbitant and actually prohibitive. But also, they will be talking more in the near future about a program that they've looked into and will be coming to, I believe, the Borough to look for supportive public works, which is Adopt a Drain. It sounds silly, but it really is an excellent idea, at a very inexpensive cost or no cost if we can pilot it ourselves. Volunteers literally adopt a particular storm drain with the increased monitoring of storm water runoff as required by the state. It doesn't involve anything more extensive than making sure the drains remain clean, free of debris. If you notice after a rainstorm, the leaves can wash in and actually stop storm water, our storm water management system from working efficiently. That also contributes a lot to the flooding that we've been experiencing. So it's a really important program, and we'll be bringing more to you as we go forward. And just an update on the bulk trash, the program we started last year with appointment-only bulk trash removal went on through April, May, and June, every Wednesday. So that was 14 Wednesdays altogether. We had 335 stops on the south side during the three months and 371 stops on the north side, which is almost double last year's pickups. It was, our superintendent reported that it went very well. No glitches, and the crews were able to actually spill over if there was some quiet time after trash or recycling pickup, a truck would try to make one or two more rounds. But that was very, very successful. Other than that, Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you for your report. All right, Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
Just a brief one, because I've been out. So I know, I just wanted to remind my neighbors on the north side, as I was on the triangle, that tomorrow is our garbage pickup. I know there's only a few members of the public on the meeting, but for those of us impacted by the holiday schedule, Wednesday's garbage day. So just, hey, I just put mine out, and I thought I'd share that. And I just wanted to take a moment, if you don't mind, because Councilwoman Kim Cho Han wasn't able to be at the meeting tonight, but we do have the resolution regarding the award of the contract for revaluation services on tonight. Very excited because I know something she's been, you know, keeping on our radar for the last few months. And we will come out as soon as we have our signed agreement, and also the state has to sign off on the agreement as well. So once we get the blessing from the state, we will be working through a timeline, which will also include communications and community meetings where the public will be invited to ask questions and learn more about the process as we move forward. So I just wanted to point that resolution on because I know it's been a while in coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
All right. I do have a report. Really, so much has happened in the last month, locally, statewide, and nationally. And while, like so many of you, I'm dismayed by the direction the Supreme Court has signaled that our country is heading, I remain positive in the surety that the many of us who do not agree with these recent decisions will not capitulate to the reduction of our basic rights that, that they signal for Americans. Know that as leader of your governing body, I assure you that we will continue to respond to and act on your needs and the needs of all our residents, men, women, teens, children, straight, gay, non-binary, rich, poor, middle-class, Christian, Jewish, Muslim, Buddhist, and other religions, or no religious preference. Born in America or immigrant to Highland Park, our Highland Park values will not be compromised. Now, let me begin by sharing some good news for Highland Park. Our Park Partners Program that invites residents to participate in deciding how some of our tax revenue is given back to Highland Parkers who come up with programs to benefit our community was back in 2022. Voting was held on June 26th. Over 300 residents participated. Five excellent proposals were selected by our residents. You can learn more about the winning programs on our website at www.hpboro.com. And congratulations to all our winners. Exactly, thank you. As, as Councilman Hirsch mentioned before, many of you have seen the improvements to the playground areas in Donaldson Park. Middlesex County worked very closely with us. They invested $750,000 and produced state-of-the-art, safe, educational, and weather-resistant play areas. Also, as many of you know, I've been involved with the League of Municipalities, a statewide organization of mayors and elected officials from all 565 New Jersey municipalities, and the New Jersey League of Mayors in efforts to start receiving funds from energy tax proceeds wrongly withheld by the state for decades. These funds rightfully due to municipalities to help our real estate taxes were kept in New Jersey state coffers for decades. Thanks to our efforts, the New Jersey Legislature has included the beginning of reimbursement of past-due energy tax rebates in the new fiscal year 2023 budget. Through 2021, the state owes Highland Park over $11,500,000. Now, we will begin to see the gradual return of this money that is due to us, us, the Highland Park taxpayers. This is a great victory for Highland Park and all New Jersey municipalities, and will assist in our efforts towards tax stabilization. Now, some good news with, mixed with some legitimate concerns. First, overall, we are heartened by the positive response to our new e-scooters in town. Many of our citizens are reported users, and people generally are happy with this new eco-friendly transportation option. But as with any change, we must be mindful of concerns raised as well. Please expect a learning curve as we work through the new mode of sustainable local transportation. We are working with VO, the supplier of our e-scooters, to increase awareness of and safe use of our e-scooters. Meanwhile, as you drive around town, please stay aware of all of our new means of transportation. And now for some bad news, but we will adapt. There have been awful recent Supreme Court decisions on Roe versus Wade, open carry weapon laws, EPA rights to regulate power plants, et cetera. These are setbacks of decades of progress. Many residents have expressed alarm to me. I commend the New Jersey State Legislature and Governor Murphy for quickly exploring and, in some cases, already passing strong responses, especially in gun laws and reproductive rights. Highland Park is considering responses as well, such as an ordinance amendment to our Open Public Meetings ordinance that would ban firearms in all our public buildings, including schools. This ordinance amendment will be on August's council agenda. Meanwhile, tonight, we will be voting on a resolution that bans firearms from any municipal buildings. Please stay tuned for more on this. And in the immediate aftermath of these decisions, a few thoughts. Voting in all elections really counts. These Supreme Court decisions didn't occur in a vacuum. They are the direct results of historically low voter turnout in the 2016 presidential election, which has been reported at only 54.8% of voting age population. That means that over 45% of the population that is eligible to vote didn't vote. We can't surrender to cynicism. Yes. Yes, politics can be messy and at times even dirty. But elected officials can and often do accomplish things that broaden. People's rights, protect our environment and keep us safer. When someone casually dismisses the whole political process or the entire government. They are really just walking away from their civic obligation to get involved. Get informed, make thoughtful choices and stay involved. Now more than ever, we need more people to get involved. As citizens who enjoy privileges in this great democracy. It is our sacred responsibility to keep track of the news. To stay informed on what our elected officials are doing and to share our views with our elected officials. Thank you, Councilman Hirsch, for sharing contact information to allow us to do that. We are doubly privileged to live in the state of New Jersey. Which which hears what we have to say about these issues. Rights and precautions so many of us treasure and take meaningful action on them. I believe it behooves us to recognize and thank our legislators for the actions that they have taken. And to continue to voice our opinions loudly and clearly. As you know, several gun bills cleared both chambers in Trenton. And three more gun violence prevention bills were signed into law today by Acting Governor Sheila Oliver. The bills that were part of the Violence Intervention Program include. S thirty-three oh one, which establishes hospital-based violence intervention programs in the Department of Health. S thirty-three twelve, which requires certain hospitals to provide hospital-based. Or hospital-linked violence intervention programs in order to be designated as Level One or Level Two Trauma Centers. S thirty-three twenty-three, which requires. Victim counseling services to partner with trauma centers. To refer certain victims to violence intervention programs. Thanks go out to Highland Park's own Karen Cantor. President of the Brady Middlesex County for her tireless work on gun safety and control issues. Lastly. Thank you, Matt. That's true. She does deserve a round of applause. Governor Murphy signed a fifty point six billion dollar state budget that includes. Forty-five million dollars to expand family planning and abortion services and security upgrades for clinics. A move that will prepare New Jersey to be an even safer haven. State as twenty-six other states move to outlaw or severely restrict the procedure. I am proud to be a resident of New Jersey. There's more to do, but we will continue to work hard on that. Thank you. Okay, we're now ready for our first public participation session. It is a total of twenty-one minutes, three minutes maximum per speaker. Comments are limited to items that are on this tonight's agenda. If you want to speak on an item that is not listed. Please do so at the second public comment session later in the meeting. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and indicate when three minutes has lapsed. She will give you a warning when there is thirty seconds remaining. There will be a hard stop at the three-minute mark to make sure everyone has time to speak. As a reminder, I may interrupt, warn or terminate a participant's statement. If it does not adhere to the three minutes provided or if the statement is abusive, obscene or irrelevant. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing star nine. On your phone keypad or select the raise hand button on the application. Please press star six to unmute yourself. The Borough Administrator will announce your turn by reading out your name or the last four digits of your phone number. Please begin by telling us your first and last name as well as your address. Again, if you would like to speak about a topic on the agenda, please press star nine or the raise hand button now.
Okay, Mayor, it looks like we have eight attendees from the public and two hands raised at this point. The first one up is a phone number ending in four, 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 five. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Lois Leving, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
North Second Avenue. Okay, on the consent agenda, please, fourteen C and D are lumping together. There is water and it must be borough water. It's been over a year leaking. On the street, I went out, it's a cap in the street behind the gun shop that says G A S. I called, well, D P W the other day. I called public service today. To get the street people out eventually. It did not happen today. But there's where you've had a year of leaking. I thought it was coming off the hill, but the hill is dry. The water is is in the street and the street crests crowns where this cap is. So there's some of your water because the fire hydrant is about a hundred feet further down. Fourteen C. Sorry, E, if you could please explain the cost and what's happening there if you're allowed to. Fourteen I, I see the improvements, but wasn't Riverview just patched up when it had a hole or two? Or I guess I hole and fourteen M, carrying firearms. I was in the downstairs Borough Hall when Tim Coyle asked someone if they were carrying and the man said yes. And Tim said, you're carrying. So you know, this is five or so years ago. And then the man said, no. So I hope you got metal detectors or something because it's already happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Lois. And Lois, are you still on?
Yes.
Okay, let's let's break down your your questions on the consent agenda. Can we? Start with your first one, which was, I believe, fourteen E.
Well, after the leaking water, yes, and then fourteen E. What is the cost? What's happening? What is the borough doing with good old Buckwoods?
Okay, Borough Administrator, I'm gonna turn to you. Would you like to address that?
It's regarding ongoing litigation with J S M. It's a licensed site remediation professional firm that's been advising us. And providing expert testimony and and reports as part of litigation and we're, we have additional work we need them to do for us. So. The amount that we're asking for authorization is not to exceed ten thousand for this particular piece of the proposal.
Ten thousand, thank you. Okay, then the next was I about the improvements to a few streets plus Riverview, which I know at least had a patch. And then M, the carrying firearms in the buildings.
Okay. Who would like to address fourteen I about the grants applicant? Okay.
I'll just take it really quick because it's on my mind. It's for a different section of Riverview. There was a collapse. Following Hurricane Ida that we did do a significant repair. It's a section of the road. Further down, it will also allow us to continue some of the reinforcement work that was done as part of the repair after Ida. So that's that's what it's not the same section I was already repairing.
Okay, and the last one, Lois?
M, the carrying firearms. Will there, I hope, be metal detectors? Are you going to people being padded down? It's already happening, so it's about time you banned firearms.
Yeah, we're we're, well, we're, as I mentioned in my report. We are passing the resolution tonight, but the actual ordinance we are looking to introduce. In August, we just need a little more time and we will certainly be looking at safety precautions and. I see the Borough Administrator raising her hand as well.
Nothing to do with firearms, so I didn't mean to cut you off, Mayor, if you had another point. I wanted to ask Lois. If she could tell me which road this water leak is on. Are you referring to Dennison or Raritan?
Dennison. No, no, it's on Dennison. It's about a hundred and fifty feet in. It's behind the gun shop, your property. And you can't miss it unless it's pouring rain and and then you can still check. You'll.
I'll have the Water Department check it out. I just wanted to make sure I sent them in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lois.
Welcome.
All right, Borough Administrator, are there any other?
Oh, sorry, Mayor, I was noting that I need to talk to the water guys tomorrow. Hold on. Yes, we do have one more hand. Let me see here. Lower. We have another phone number, this time ending nine, six, five, five. Please state your name and address for the record. Phone number nine, six, five, five. You need to, there you go. State your name.
Hello, Mayor and Council and Terry. My name's Alan Silver, South Third Avenue. I just had a few questions regarding the items on the agenda. The traffic study, I understand that if I recall correctly, it's about forty-nine thousand dollars. That's been. Budgeted for the traffic study. I wanted to find out if that was done through a competitive bidding process and if not, why not? The second question is, I noticed there are a number of legal challenges in which Highland Park has been sued and I just wanted to know what the. Annual budget is for defending legal challenges within the borough. Then my third question regards to the e-scooters that the mayor spoke about. I've noticed and I just wanna, you know, I guess bring it to everyone's attention. And maybe it's maybe it's more of a comment than a question, but. A number of times I see people riding very recklessly with these e-scooters. I. Shortly, about about, I'd say about four weeks ago, I was driving on the north side and. I'm very cautious in terms of looking out for pedestrians and what have you, but I, there was a young woman. Riding an e-scooter shortly, I guess, after they become became permissible. And she was doing figure eights in the intersection while, you know, my car was obviously right there and. I just, I just think that, I just wanted to know, I guess, maybe, maybe it is a question. Are there any requirements in terms of traffic safety? Is there any type of? My understanding is that there's no license involved for for these types of e-scooters, but. I am concerned about the safety issue and want to know if there's any way to. Make sure that people are, when they're riding them, know know the rules of the road, know how to how to operate them safely. Thank you.
Okay, so there's a lot impacted in those three questions. So first of all, as far as the traffic study is concerned. Borough Administrator, would you like to address the process that we went through?
Well, first I'll clarify that was on the agenda prior meeting, so just want to make sure you guys were aware it wasn't on this agenda, I don't believe. But where the contractor we're working with is C M E, who's our contractor that we work with, has been our borough engineer for many years. They have a traffic division that will be assisting us with the application to the N J D O T. That's what. I'm assuming Mr. Silver is referring to, given the dollar value he stated. And the, without probably boring you and overstepping my comprehension of procurement rules, when it's a professional service agreement with a licensed professional such as. Professional engineer, we aren't required to do a R F P and we can award. The way we did at the last meeting and you can chime in if I got that wrong.
I I think it's also important to note that when when we do go out for an engineering group at the beginning of each year, we did do go out for. An open call for engineers and C M E is the group that has won the bid from for us for the last couple of years. Or I should say more than a couple, but for a few. Borough Attorney, did you want to add to that at all?
I know, Madam Mayor, I think what you've just indicated in the administrator is exactly correct. Professional services agreements and usually we do very well working with C M Es since they do all the work. And they have an excellent traffic division, so that's probably what we did. We hired them and they know the community. And they'll give us a fair price and a good product.
Yeah, and I just want to iterate that we did go out to bid for the engineering group as we do every year. Then you talked, you had questions about the legal challenges. Not quite sure what you're referring to.
I think there were a number of items. If I recall correctly, where it indicated Highland Park was being sued and. Wanted to get a sense of what the budget for legal representation is, like an annual budget.
So first Borough Attorney, can you think of more than one situation where we're being sued now?
Well, there are two major lawsuits pending. Of course, we get sued, we have to defend ourselves. One is the J S M litigation over alleged pollution on the Buckwoods property. Any environmental litigation like that is extremely expensive to defend and is very technical defense. And that's why we're hiring, as Terry indicated, expert witness to work with us on that. And that's been pending now for several years. And then, as you know, unfortunately, we also have. A first-in-the-state lawsuit involving the award of cannabis licenses. And we have been picked, you have been picked by. An individuals here in town with a lawyer to launch that lawsuit. We hope it's not around too long. We filed already a motion to have it dismissed, which will be argued towards the end of this month. And we hope that that will be the end of that litigation. But if not, then we'll have to continue and solicit the assistance of the Attorney General and others to help us defend that, which is really a statewide issue. Those are the two major ones. We do periodically get notices of tort claim. We forward those to our insurance company. We have insurance for that and for the most part. The insurance company will appoint lawyers who are paid by the insurance company. Those are your two significant pieces of litigation right now.
And Borough Attorney, for the benefit of the non-legal professionals listening to this, what is a tort claim?
Well, that's, it's a claim that somebody was at fault and caused damage or injury to someone else. For example, if there is a problem with a street or a sidewalk and somebody slips and falls and gets injured. Whether we're responsible or not, a claim is sent into us and we have six months with our insurance company to investigate it. And either settle up or defend the claim. Oftentimes, these claims are filed and they don't lead to litigation, fortunately. But a court is really a wrong. Somebody believes that somebody else committed a wrong. And and they have a legal recourse for that. And we get those routinely, as do all municipalities, but they're investigated, they're insured against and they're defended by our insurance company.
So right now there are two active litigation litigations, one involving J S M properties and. The other, the recent cannabis.
Causage.
Cases, yeah.
Right.
And and to answer the question as to how much is in the budget for litigation, I believe we have a legal. Budget line and the expenses come out of that line each year, so it's. It's not that we set up a separate line called litigation. It may show up later as a separate line under legal fees, but we can't project. When somebody is going to try to sue the borough. Okay, you're very welcome. Right Borough Administrator, are there any other hands?
Uh, no, Mayor, I don't see any hands and.
Okay, then I'm going to.
And people in attendance, just for the.
Okay, thank you. And so I am going to move on in our agenda tonight to ordinances that require a second reading. Clerk, could you please report on advertising and amending the record ordinance for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending section four oh seven dash eleven. Of the code of the Borough of Highland Park, setting forth the fee schedule for basic towing services was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title. An affidavit of publication are on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
All right, may I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
Moved.
Okay, any public hearing on this?
Don't see any hands raised. Those of you in the public who want to speak on this specific ordinance, now's your chance to raise your hand. If you'd like to say something. Mayor, I see no hands raised.
Okay. May I have a motion on this resolution to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Moved.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to resolutions that require a separate reading. Resolution seven twenty-two one sixty-seven, authorizing a special emergency appropriation pursuant to NJSA forty-eight four dash fifty-three to provide funds to comply with the Middlesex County Board of Taxation Order to implement a municipal-wide revaluation, and further authorizing the issuance of special emergency notes to fund such special emergency authorization. May I have a motion to adopt or reject?
Moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Enter you.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, seven twenty-two one sixty-eight, resolution awarding agreement for the revaluation of real property within the Borough of Highland Park to professional property appraisers. May I have a motion to adopt or reject?
Moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Just a note, although she's not here tonight, Councilwoman Kim Cho-Han has been working actively on keeping us all informed of the process of this. This is another major step in getting the appraisers. And as she has been telling us, they also have a program that will be presenting to the public what they're going to be doing for the appraisal process. So I thank her very much for her work on that, and I vote yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
All right, may I have a motion to adopt or reject the consent agenda items fourteen A through fourteen N?
Moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
I just wanna comment, as others have, on, on fourteen M, which is a resolution banning the carrying of weapons in any building owned by the borough. The ordinance that we have planned is much more far-reaching than, than that, but all we can do right now with the resolution is do something that will hopefully contribute to the feeling of safety of our residents after the reprehensible and despicable decision of the Supreme Court overturning specifically New Jersey's open carry rules. We were one of seven states named in their Supreme, in the Supreme Court decision as having an unconstitutional regulation of open carry because it was too loose and subjective, so that the ordinance that we have will apply to all public buildings, not just borough buildings. But of course, the exception is provided in state law that, obviously, our police officers and the exped, you know, expeditious performance of their duties are not included. And I could say a lot more about these decisions, including the Roe versus Wade decision based upon this theory of originalism. Anybody who reads the decisions will see that the analysis starts pre-revolution and ends approximately during reconstruction based upon white male dominance. It's reprehensible and disgusting. It does not match who we are in Highland Park, New Jersey, or even a majority of the country. I vote yes.
And Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes, and congratulations to Bill Malloy for joining the Housing Authority. I served with him, or served with him on the Highland Park Affordable Housing Corp., and he is just, I mean, his state background, previously notwithstanding, he is just such a wealth of information, a huge asset to, to the Highland Park Housing Authority. Yes, to all.
Thank you. Okay, I am looking at appointments coming up, and I'd like to appoint Laurel Kornfeldt and Mason Resnick to our Public Information Commission. Mason has already been providing us with wonderful photography, and this will be a wonderful addition. Both of them will be an excellent addition to our Information Commission. May I have a motion to confirm them?
Moved. Second.
Okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
So you need to unmute.
I apologize, yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Tara and I were, were laughing because we are alum, we are alumni of the Public Information Committee. It's, it's always nice to bolster the ranks, yes.
Okay, great. All right, it's now time for our second public discussion session. Each speaker has three minutes, but may comment on any topic. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and will offer a thirty-second warning, and then indicate when three minutes has lapsed. The session will wrap up by nine PM. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone keypad, or select the raise hand button on the Zoom application. Please unmute yourself by pressing star six. The Borough Administrator will announce your turn by reading out your name and the last four digits of your phone number. Please begin by telling us your name, your first and last name, as well as your address. Again, if you would like to speak about a topic on or off the agenda, please press star nine or the raise hand button now. Borough Administrator, do we have anyone?
Yes, Mayor, we have eight attendees, two hands raised. First up, Jonathan Lerner. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Lerner, I live at two twenty-eight Magnolia Street. And about a year ago, we had our street dug up for replacement of the gas main, and at the time, the street was dug up, we were told that repaving would be later this fall or sometime next spring. We're coming up on the year now, and it's, you know, the streets are really a mess here. And I was wondering, you know, who in the borough is responsible for making sure, I saw that, you know, some street improvements, you know, that were on the agenda tonight, but, you know, who in the borough is responsible for, you know, making this block whole and the other blocks that were done, that were dug up whole, and having that resolved, because it's really a problem.
Okay, Councilman, Council President Phil George, I see you're ready to answer.
Yes, Mayor, thank you, thank you for the question, Jonathan. The, the streets that were excavated to replace the hundred-year-old plus gas lines by PSCNG are being repaired by PSCNG. The original anticipation was that at least some of them, if not all of them, would get done before the paving season closed down because of the bad weather last fall. However, the decision was made in consultation with the Borough, DPW and Public Safety, that it would be put off because there was still some major work to be done on some streets involving replacement of the gas mains and also the junctions. If you go online to the Borough's website, look at Public Works, and you'll find a chart for street repairs and a map, which is actually color-coded to show the streets that are going to be paved, and who is doing them. They're primarily all going to be repaved in town by PSCNG because it was such substantial work. And it shows what the borough will be doing, what DPW will be working on, who are contractor, and also what PSCNG will be replacing. I talked today with the Superintendent of Public Works regarding that schedule. He indicated that the current plan is to have PSCNG commence its work fairly soon and let PSCNG complete its work first, so that the borough, in part through very clever and very persistent negotiations by the Borough Administrator, to get some extra work done on our part by PSCNG, in particular because there may be intersections, crosswalks, or, or other side of the street that can be repaved, well, while the machinery's there, and the crews are there, and the asphalt is being brought in to do that. So the, the agreement currently is to have PSCNG commence, and then we will jump in on that. If you look at the map and the chart of the streets to be repaired, it looks like a good thirty percent of the town is going to be repaired, and your street is on the list. We apologize for the delay, but between the season closing down last year and the fact that PSCNG had a substantial amount of work that they found needed to be done, that could not be finished until the spring, the project was put off for a year.
Okay, but I'm looking at that map now, and there's really no, there's no sort of dates here or anything that indicates.
That's, that's correct. That is subject to weather, that is subject to supplies of asphalt being available, and also the scheduling with the borough.
And I see the Borough Administrator has her hand up. Would you like to add to that?
Just to add to what Council President George said, we also, and I'm just catching up from vacation, but I also spoke to the Superintendent, and he indicated that he met with our lead for PSCNG to go over all the roads last week. They owe me a list with a schedule. That's something that we're really pushing hard to get because of the extensive amount of work to be done. We are trying to minimize the chaos. It will be chaotic, but we also wanna do our best to announce what roads and just to plan them out to minimize the disruption to the residents as much as possible. So it will be this year unless something catastrophic happens on PSCNG's end. So it's not infinite. I, that's just, it sounded like you were concerned about that.
Can I hold you to it?
You can hold PSCNG to it. I can't make them.
Councilman Hirsch, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Mr. Lerner, please. I live on, I live on Felton Avenue, which is also a recently paved road that was dug up last summer. So we're really looking forward to, to getting that schedule underway. And I guess just for, for, for the benefit of, I guess, everybody here and watching, because everything here is for the benefit of everybody here and watching. But Terry, do we have, how are we, are we coordinating with PSCNG on the intersection safety improvements? Because I know that, Phil, you had mentioned that there are intersections that to be.
They're gonna be come and gone before those improvements happen, so yes, we're good.
All right, so just, just sort of, I mean, there's a bunch of moving parts, so it's not just PSCNG. We have two grants for our Safe Roots to School program, for example, and that information is the road paving schedule, the municipal road paving schedule, and the Safe Roots to School roads are available on the Borough website, and then just, I guess, coordinating those with PSCNG. So everybody's out of each other's way.
We're trying our best, and PSCNG does complicate things because they are driven by a schedule bigger than Highland Park. And the other issue was, they really had trouble finishing up the service connections, and they could, they're not gonna come back and pave twice. So they really had to clean up all the last individual houses, you know, connecting to those gas mains that I know, feel like have been replaced for a really long time, but there was all the other work that had to happen. I'm not trying to make excuses, this isn't what they tell us, but I feel the pain, and I feel very optimistic. We will have these roads paved before the end of the paving season this year.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jonathan. All right, Borough Administrator, is there another hand you mentioned?
I do see another hand. It's a phone number ending four 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 five. State your name and address again for us, please.
Hi, Lois Loving, North Second Avenue. Correction from last month's meeting, I mentioned that CME had worked for North Brunswick. It was South Brunswick that dropped them and, and went to an in-house engineer. Second correction, someone said we don't have enough work for in-house. The borough used to have in-house before CME in the mid-eighties. I think it was Mr. Gross, he was very young when he passed away. And last, but not least, it feels and sounds like to me that the Supreme Court has been taken over by the Taliban with this Roe v. Wade, and now discussion of the changing contraceptives and the rest is absolutely medieval. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Lois. Any other hands?
Hold on, I see one other hand, Mayor, Ruthie Solomon. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Ruth Solomon, it's seven oh four South First Avenue. It seems to me like our block has really taken, you know, one of the brunts of PSCNG. They, I, I've been living in a used truck lot for way over a year. It's terrible, it's unreasonable at this point. And the paving is one story, but they really wrecked our curbing. And I wonder who's gonna be responsible for all those curves? And I saw them, I have some of it on video, I mean, I could prove anything I'm saying. I've been listening to that noise, like a war zone, terrible. And they take the trucks, you know, the John Deere equipment, and just plow right into the curbing. It's all wrecked. So does somebody intend to really fix the street? Or is that, they were here all last week there, and don't seem to be finished yet. It's a long time, I think like a year and three or four months. I keep asking them, when are you leaving? They said soon. You wouldn't wanna hold your breath, believe me. The, the street is a mess, and I wonder who is responsible for all of that? Is it gonna be Highland Park or them? Because they did wreck most of that.
Yeah, Ruthie, I, I walk past, I walk on South First very often, and know exactly what you're talking about. Borough Administrator, did you want to respond to that?
I just would say I will follow up with the Superintendent, who's been, like I said, working very closely with PSCNG. I did not have this curb issue. I know the roadway will be, the paving will be restored in full, but I will find out if, if we have, and if I need to follow up with you, I will, as to the specific locations, but it sounds like others who may live in that neighborhood will be very familiar with it. So I, I, my understanding is if they damaged them, and we can establish it, it's their responsibility.
Well, let's see if they admit it, but I watched them doing it for a long time. See, they. Yeah, and they plow, and, you know, those men aren't delicate. That's what they do for a living, you know, they just move earth, and they move stone, and they drop planks, and, you know, the noise is one story, the destruction is another. They've really ruined everything, really needs to be fixed, and they should be held accountable.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ruthie. Okay, any other hands?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Then, Council members, I'm going to ask, before we go into our work session, does anyone want to take a five-minute recess? I'm glad to see you don't. Okay, we're moving on to our work session items at this point. No formal action can be taken at this time. First up, Phil George, Shade Tree Advisory Committee Ordinance Amendment. Would you like to talk to that?
Yes, Mayor, just very briefly, these are amendments to the, actually, in the Boards and Commissions ordinance. When they were, the Boards and Commissions ordinance was revised a couple of years ago to basically sharpen up the, the, the general rules for condu- a couple of years ago to basically sharpen up the general rules for conducting of meetings for Boards and Commissions, not to their specific powers, so much as just to organize them more within one ordinance with regard to procedures. The Shade Tree Advisory Commission or portion of the ordinance was dropped. It was relatively lately added, and then unfortunately was dropped. So originally, the proposal was simply to bring the original ordinance back to its original form and just bring the Shade Tree Commission back into the Boards and Commissions ordinance as it was originally drafted. However, there were a number of changes in state legislation regarding maintenance of trees, qualified tree maintenance plans, and some immunities granted to the Borough and to the volunteers for Shade Tree Advisory Commission, which had been adopted in the meantime, so that STACK asks that we take a look at the ordinance rather than just bring the old ordinance back in, that we make the necessary changes to update our code to match the new state law. And that's what the Borough Attorney has done, working with the two co-chairs of STACK. These are updates that simply bring in required state law with regard to preparing, maintaining, and registering a qualified tree maintenance plan, working with the State Department of Agriculture and DEP with regard to canopy preservation and so on. They're all state laws that are required to be part of the STACK ordinance.
Okay, any questions for Council President George? All right. Then we'll move on to the second item, the VO scooters. I had asked in Terry's absence, absent her assistant, Emma Missy, to put together for us the rules and regulations that renters of the e-scooters have to follow, because I know several of us have, several of you have and I have received questions from residents asking things like, do they ride on the sidewalks? You know, do they have to wear helmets? All of those questions. So Terry, do you want to respond to this?
I mean, again, throwing me in there in the mix because I have been out, but I know an email was circulated to the governing body with a link to the ordinance provisions, as well as our kind of rules of conduct that VO abides by and riders have to abide by. And I know from my own living here as well, what some of the key questions that seem to be coming up, came up previously in the public comment. No, people aren't supposed to ride on sidewalks. Yes, people do ride on the sidewalks, and it's going to be a constant effort to educate and inform people and try to guide them into the appropriate locations. Same with parking, though I know some folks aren't real happy with parking in the public right-of-way in front of their homes, but that is allowed in most areas of our town under our current protocols. However, as we learn where the ridership is, and if we see large clusters of scooters accumulating regularly in neighborhoods, we might be able to identify additional forced parking areas in neighborhoods as needed. But again, we need the data to back up where those locations ought to be. And I guess in terms of safety, the question about helmets has come up. They are not required. They are highly recommended, especially if you're not, you know, real versed in how these things operate. But they are not a requirement of the VO scooters, nor are they state law, or our ordinance, again, encourages them. So I guess I kind of throw it to the members of the council, if you have any questions or areas where you think there needs to be additional education. We do have plans, I should mention, to have kind of the equivalent of a bike rodeo, but for e-scooters, where VO would come, they'd be available at no charge for residents who may be curious but not quite ready to get the app on their phone and, you know, figure it all out. So we'll be announcing that. I was kind of waiting till I got back from vacation to sort through that. So that's something I think might be an opportunity for some hands-on learning, as well as questions for VO directly. You know, people can ask their questions. So I'm sorry, I'll stop talking. I see Phil has his hand up.
Phil, did you want to say something?
Just briefly, I have a question. I wonder if Public Safety could possibly look at some of the parking, because I've noticed a lot of scooters being parked and actually taking up a parking space. And I think right now, everybody's trying to get used to it. So they're somewhat respectful of the scooter there, but especially in some of the congested areas like down off Crows Mill. They, they're actually, the one scooter takes up a parking space. And parking in a lot of these areas is at a premium. So I was wondering if we could look at that and maybe somehow engineer the, at least the scooters, if not, you know, we don't want them on the sidewalk, and we certainly don't want them on people's lawns, but maybe if they could park on the verge. And another one, and another idea, and it's not a suggestion yet, but especially to have Public Safety and the chief think about it, is we have the yellow boxes at the corners, which are also protected by site triangles, but the scooters, especially if they're laid down, might be able to be put there while VO goes around and collects them up and not take up the parking spaces. Because I think that sooner or later, people are going to become concerned about the scooters taking up the parking spaces or like during, the one that managed to percolate itself in front of my driveway, and a lot of people have had that experience, to just to start thinking about, you know, as we're adapting to it. I'm totally in supportive, and I'm very much in support of the sustainability and the equities involved with all of our residents for having this kind of local transportation. But before the honeymoon wears off with everybody, you know, we need to understand that we all need to change our ways to adapt to this, but some of these solutions may be a good idea to think about during this transition while we're getting used to it. That's my only comment.
Terry, did you want to respond to that?
I just wanted to clarify one point, because I think I could see it being kind of a misconception about what's doable. While we have some forced parking areas downtown, those red-taped areas where you're supposed to pick up and return scooters to, the reality of the GPS technology is that the, while they create the zone, it's not that precise. So even if we, the best we can hope is if we create some visible parking areas, people will be respectful and put them in there. But unfortunately, I don't think the technology will allow us to know it's in the sidewalk, it's in the verge, or it's in the parking space on the street. There's just a little bit of a limitation to how precise the GPS units on each scooter are. That said, your point about parking spaces and in certain neighborhoods and finding additional, you know, parking hubs is what we need, we're going to be looking at the data for the last month to see, you know, we don't want to just go off, Phil's one anecdote on Crows Lane that one day where he saw it in the spot. We want to see, are we seeing chronically a bunch of scooters on Crows? Maybe we should designate a parking area, not taking up a space if we can avoid it, especially in tight neighborhoods. But I think that's exactly what's nice about this system, is it is flexible and adaptable based on how our residents use it. But I think people are still exploring it, and it's a little premature to figure out those new hubs. But the nice thing about the system, and that's what's so attractive about it, is we can implement these policies incrementally as we learn more about ridership.
Okay, Councilman Hirsch, you had a question?
Thank you, Mayor. I thank you everyone for this discussion. Yeah, I just, you know, I love the scooters. I am a frequent flyer. I wish they had a frequent flyer program, but I have to be responsible, and it can't be a daily habit, these scooters. But a few observations just experientially is, I am concerned about, you know, obviously, it's impossible to know, but if there are underage riders, under, you know, it's supposed to be 18 and over, and I know it's very difficult to enforce, but that's a real concern, real concern of mine, is having under 18 riding around. I don't pretend to know how we address that, but I think VO may have at least some suggestions, or whether it's part of our informational campaign. And then I guess with VO, yeah, I don't, I don't mind, you know, look, it's, when we use these scooters, we have to be responsible, just like when we operate any vehicle in the roadway, whether it's a bicycle, a skateboard, a car, or an e-scooter. So when it comes to parking and leaving them, it's just really important to either take it to a designated parking area or put them between the sidewalk and the street, because that's where they belong. They don't belong on the sidewalk. They do not belong parked in the street, and they certainly do not belong parked on somebody else's property. I've had to tell folks actually to, I've had to politely suggest to folks that they do not throw the scooter in the trash bin if one appears under the lawn, because that would be illegal. And also, and also, just not a good way to address a community concern, but I understand the frustration. And Terry, just one more thing, I, you know, you know, I, what's really wonderful about them is that, you know, I think folks are getting accustomed to using them and maybe even parking one outside their home. And if they happen to still be there the next day, great, you know, they get back on them. If they're not, because someone else grabbed it, great. But I think I just want to also get a better handle on how often VO comes around, because I'm not, sometimes they do, but sometimes I do see scooters parked properly for quite some time.
Sure.
Yeah. That's it. I love them.
And Councilwoman Canavera, you have your hand up.
Yes. First of all, Terry, I live on Crows. I've seen them twice, and they have been on the verge. They have not been in parking spots, just to let you know. But also, my concern, again, like Matt mentioned, was children. I'm not going to lie, my son, who just turned 14, I found out he used his Cash App card to rent one. And apparently, a lot, him and a lot of his friends were doing it. He got in trouble and won't do it again, but can't stop the other kids. So I was concerned about what we can do about that, because my son was not wearing a helmet and either were any of his friends. And so that's a concern for me.
Yep. I'll follow up. There may be some good strategies they have. They're in some very large markets, and maybe, and certainly, education of parents about that, because they, you know, there's a screen, but they're just saying, oh, yeah, I'm 18, and moving on with their day. So maybe there's, you have to upload a driver's license, or there's something that, but then that would prohibit people who don't have a driver's license. We'll have to figure it out. I'm sure there's something we can do to at least beef up education and enforcement around that issue.
Yeah, because I asked him, I'm like, how did you do it? He's like, I used my Cash App card. I'm like, but you're not 18. He's like, they don't know that. I just checked, yes.
And I see our Public Safety Council liaison hand up. Elsie, Councilwoman Foster, do you have a comment or a question?
I would just like to say that this is going to be something I'm going to bring back to our Public Safety Committee, so we can discuss this in much more detail. I know there's a meeting that VO is going to be having soon, and maybe a simple suggestion, like some kind of ID, maybe their high school ID, their library cards, or some kind of ID would be required that would show date of birth or something that could be added to ensure, because as you all have seen, I've seen, I think, kids as young as, young as 9, 10 in the park, and they're riding with their families, and they have these scooters, and, you know, the family's providing them the okay, because you see family of four riding around on their scooters. So families are endorsing. So it's another hurdle that we have to cross as it pertains to how people wish to govern their families and as it pertains to public safety, which is always my greatest concern, is to keeping everyone safe. So it's going to be, it's going to be a work in process for how we handle this one going forward. But this will be discussed in our next Public Service Committee meeting.
Yeah, I think that's the best way to go. If your committee, Councilwoman Foster, can take a look at this and come up with some proposals that you can discuss with VO.
That'd be great. And they're very eager to regroup and get feedback. So, and I know we have a meeting, I think, as soon as next week, Elsie. So I can, once I get that feedback, we can bring it back to them and come back to the committee with some suggestions.
All right. And does anyone else have a comment they'd like to make on this? Well, oh, Councilman Hirsch.
Sorry, one thing I forgot to, I left out. It may also be worth exploring with them, if there are ways to incentivize people to, users to bring them back to the red parking areas. Yes, you can leave it on the, you know, in the neighborhoods, but maybe there's added incentive to, hey, return that shopping cart, return your scooter.
Yeah, it's a good idea. Okay. We're done with our work session. We do have an item to discuss in executive session, so I'd like a motion to enter to executive session to discuss litigation of JSM versus the Borough of Highland Park.
I'm moved.
Okay. Motion to adjourn to executive session and to say goodbye to all of our visitors. Do we have another link to go to?
Yes, everybody, I sent one around earlier. I basically said litigation, JSM, the Island Park is the subject line.
Okay, great. So I'll see you all in a couple of minutes.
Great. Good night.
Good night, everyone. Except for the council.
Oh, great.
Good night, Moon.